We'll call the meeting to order. It's a meeting of January 22. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Second.
With motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, the motion carries. Second item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Now, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're going to go to the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there has to do with some job description approvals. And Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson Commission. This evening, we have two different job description approvals we'd like the City Commission to take action on. The first is our Human Resources Tech. This position is intended to assist the Human Resources Coordinator with job duties such as taking care of the advertising process and the onboarding. This would be a great assistance to our HR Coordinator. As you've been aware, we've been bringing the amount of hiring processes to you on a regular basis, and it will free up the time of the Coordinator to spend more on policy creation. So this description is, the position itself has been previously approved by the Commission. It is in the 2013 budget for a half-time position, and this is the final piece of the puzzle to hire this individual. The Civil Service Commission and I recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any questions or comments regarding this job description? Would there be a motion to approve the job description?
I make a motion to approve the Human Resource Tech job description.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. There's a second job description then?
Thank you. The second job description is titled Community Development Director. This is a reclassification of the City Planner position. The Planning Department, as originally conceived, was located beneath the Engineering Department. Because of the change in the separation of the Public Works Director and City Engineer positions into two different positions, the movement of the Renaissance Zone program and the importance and relevance of planning as it's taken on in this time of dynamic economic growth, I believe it's, we should take advantage of this opportunity to separate the Planning Department from the City Engineering Department, make it stand it alone. It's not only planning in this department, though, and because of the financing tools like the Renaissance Zone that will also be forwarded by this department, we thought a title change would be appropriate. That title change is represented this evening as Community Development Director. So the Civil Service Commission and I both recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Comments or questions by Commissioners?
I'll move that we approve the reclassification.
Sir, second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Do you have anybody in mind to fill this position?
We'll have to look.
We're gonna look. We have a very good planner already, so we won't have to look very far.
But we need a better Community Development Director.
Oh, do we?
Planner Corton would be taking on this role.
Yes.
And I'm sure ably so.
Well, if there's no other discussion, we have the motion and the second. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We're going to go to item B, which is the Tobacco Ordinance. This would be second reading. It is ordinance 1495. Mr. Coling, have there been any changes since first reading?
Mr. President, there have been no changes to the ordinance since first reading.
At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Any further comments by city staff or city Commissioners? Hearing none, the Chair entertain a motion then for approval for second reading and final passage of ordinance 1495.
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. The next item, item C, is the Myers Development Agreement. And on the agenda, it says consideration to approve the agreement, but we have actually already given, delegated to Mr. Coling and Mr. Kessel, the right to approve the agreement, which I believe they have done. So it's really here just for us to comment on or ask questions. Mr. Coling or Mr. Kessel, would there be more you would like to say about it?
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is substantially the same agreement that you saw in December. We did have a chance to meet with the developer regarding this agreement and the guarantees that they would be giving in the course of constructing their development. We have reached agreement with them, and all the changes to this agreement are fairly minor. This will be the final agreement that we will sign with the developer on this project. We anticipate that this agreement is probably going to serve as a model for us for future developments and the guarantees that we require from developers, as well as the warranties of the infrastructure, the public infrastructure that they are putting in. So there's no action that's required of you at this time, but it is there for your information. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Coling, does this include the two-year maintenance bond?
Yes, Commissioner Steiner, it does. It's in paragraph 27 of the agreement. It provides that the developer will post a surety with the city to ensure the completion of the infrastructure and then warranty the infrastructure two years following substantial completion.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? There's nothing else, I'm going to go on to item D. You ready for that? Okay, item D, there's a series of liquor license approval requests. And Mr. Kessel, you're going to take us through those?
Thank you, President Johnson. I am. The first one is a request for a beer and wine license at the Dickinson King Buffet. The Dickinson King Buffet has been in existence in our community for several years. It's located in the T-Rex Mall. They have previously not been interested in serving beer and wine, but they have changed their business model to include that. The background checks and due diligence, it all checks out okay, and it would be our recommendation to approve the application for the Dickinson King Buffet for a beer and wine on-sale license only.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his report and recommendation. Any comments or questions here? Would there be a motion regarding this issue?
So moved. Approve.
Second.
We have the motion to approve the license and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item then is a consideration to approve the transfer of a commercial on and off-sale liquor license. It's currently titled the Spur Bar. The new ownership is JK3S LLC. They will operate the Spur Bar in its current location, and the effective date should be March 1st on this liquor license, if you so approve. The background checks of all of the owners are good, and the all fees are current and paid. So it's our recommendation to approve the transfer of the commercial on and off-sale liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his introduction, report, and recommendations. Any comments or questions here? Now, would there be a motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a consideration to approve a new restaurant on-sale liquor license. It would be in the name of Machanda Hickory LLC. They intend to operate the Wildcat Pizzeria. This is a new pizzeria. They'll be located on 15th Street in the New Strip Mall. Their background checks and fees have all been paid. It would be our recommendation to approve a new restaurant on-sale liquor license to Machanda Hickory LLC.
Okay, you've heard again his report and recommendation. Any comments or questions? This is located in the New Strip Mall on 15th Street?
That's correct, the Costa Leque Strip Mall.
Will there be a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the restaurant on-sale liquor license.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
The last item then, under liquor license approval, is for the Sakura Steakhouse. This will be located in the old Happy Joe's building. This is intended to be a Japanese steakhouse. They are requesting a restaurant on-sale license as well. All of their fees are paid and the background checks do come back okay. So it'd again be another recommendation to approve the new restaurant on-sale liquor license to the Sakura Steakhouse. And just for the Commission's knowledge, the restaurant on-sale licenses and the beer and wine are not limited. The restaurant licenses do have to achieve a 50% sales ratio from liquor and food. So it'd be our recommendation to approve the restaurant on-sale license.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his report and recommendations. Any comments or questions?
I'll move, we approve the license.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. That brings us to item E, the 2013 Annual Tobacco License Renewal. And Mr. Kessel, are you introducing that also?
I am, President Johnson. The annual liquor, or excuse me, annual tobacco license renewal is done annually, obviously. This year's, I don't believe there's any changes in the number of tobacco licenses that were issued. They are in good standing. I will say that a compliance check was recently completed. There were some outstanding issues that have yet to be dealt with, and invoking our new ordinance, we will be issuing a fine, a monetary fee, and a possible suspension of license to those. But that's one of the reasons to have a tobacco license, is that we can exercise some authority over those license holders so that they do not have tobacco products in the hands of youth or others that should not have them. So we'd move to recommend, or excuse me, not move, we'd recommend that the list that you're provided of tobacco renewals be approved this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions regarding his report and recommendation?
Mr. Kessel, I see that with the number of licenses that we'll issue, it'll generate about $1,650 in revenue. Can you remind us what the revenue is used for? That revenue goes, excuse me, Commissioner Altman, that revenue goes to our general fund. We use that then for any general fund purpose or expense. We did change our ordinance this year so that any fees that I had mentioned, those administrative fees, could be shared with the agency that does our compliance checks. So these fees would go into our general fund. The administrative fees would then be shared, or could be shared, with the compliance check organization.
I have a question, too. Since there are 32 of them getting licensed, who, how often do they do the compliance checks?
Commissioner Stookard, they do them about quarterly. You know, they are under no obligation to the city to do those, but thankfully, they do. And we're glad that they do them on a regular basis, and I believe that to be quarterly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Would there be a motion to approve the renewals?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item F. This is labeled KLJ Construction Process Review, and Mr. Kessel is also introducing this item.
Thank you, President Johnson. The process by which we allow developments to occur in the City of Dickinson has been tested to a great degree this year. And our ability to stay consistent in a marketplace that I think exceeds everyone's expectations has been difficult. So what I've asked KLJ to do is look at best practices with the City of Bismarck, Minot, Fargo, Rapid City, and Williston, to determine and make recommendations on changes that should be made to, or could be made to, our ordinances with regard to a more streamlined construction process. I believe that in the end, the product will allow us to move forward on a consistent basis. Our developers that are in our community will know exactly what's expected of them. The difficulty will be implementation. And once the recommendations are received, we'll bring those back to the City Commission, and we may have to draw a proverbial line in the sand, so to speak, if we do decide to update our ordinances to reflect the responses that KLJ brings to us. So just an FYI for the City Commission, no action required this evening, to let you know that they'll be reviewing our construction process.
What, what do you expect this will cost us?
In the agreement, it'll cost us less than $20,000.
And did we budget for this? I can't remember.
No, we did not budget for this. It was going to be used, the, sorry, the name is escaping me, contingency fund.
Contingency?
Yeah, that's what I would be recommending we would use.
You're dipping into the contingency fund pretty early in the year.
For an excellent cause. We could certainly use building permit revenue as well. That would seem to be another very appropriate source.
You see, we've appointed a committee already on this here, and I think Mr. Jackson's part of that committee.
Have we?
States it in here. States it in here. Somewhere, Gene Jackson, Mr. Catan, Nathan Peck.
Commissioner Steiner, I've asked KLJ to interview certain people as part of this process, so that they can help provide some best practices. I think that's the people that you're referring to.
Yep. Just in case you didn't know.
Okay.
I think this is a good plan, because that'll help. Planning and zoning, as well as the engineers also, right? As long as they know ahead of times, we can't be changing the rules as we go along. When it's approved, that's the way it's going to be. Okay? Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, well, this is actually an agreement, right? So the motion that you're looking for would be to approve the agreement with KLJ?
Yes, President Johnson, that's correct.
Okay. Would anybody care to move that motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have the motion by Commissioner Altman, and second by Commissioner Stookard. Other discussion? Any other discussion?
I'll abstain from the vote, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Jackson will be abstaining. Abstaining, I guess. Any other comments? Hearing none, then, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains, and the Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. And Mr. Kessel, you can give your reports.
Thank you, President Johnson. I have two reports for you this evening. The first is a Human Resources Report. We have several open positions with the City of Dickinson. Most of those are open because they are new positions that the City Commission has authorized for 2013. There are five police officer positions that are open. They're interviewing applicants, and they have hired two individuals. Public Works Director, we have completed those interview processes. We did make an offer to Mr. Gary Zuroff. He is currently the Public Works Director in Glendale, Montana, and he has accepted that offer, and will start employment with the City of Dickinson on February 11. We're very excited to have Mr. Zuroff join our staff. We'll certainly make an introduction to the Commission when he arrives. We've also made an offer for the City Engineer position. We are yet to hear back on the offer letter. We haven't received it in a signed, signed copy yet. I did speak to the, to Mr. Watson, his name is Bill Watson, and his intention is to sign that letter and begin employ with the City of Dickinson. We also had two openings for sanitation labor, and we have hired both of those positions. The Admins, Limited Hour, Admin Assistant for Engineering, we did not have any qualified applications, and we'll be going back to the hiring, or back through the hiring process. The Deputy City Administrator position, we did do second interviews. We've not made an offer as of yet, and we hope to close this process by the end of this week. The full-time, or excuse me, part-time librarian, this is a new position in 2012. We did hire Caitlin Meyer to fill that position. And Street Maintenance Operator, and two additional police officer positions, they are going in through the scoring process. And once that's complete, they'll move on to the interviewing process. Hopefully, we'll have some people hired in those positions shortly. So that would conclude my report on the Human Resources side. I'll be open to any questions, if there are any. Hearing none, I'll move to the Safety Management Program. This program is ably conducted by Mr. Seavock of the Fire Department, and I thank him for compiling tonight's report. We had, we ended the year of 2012 with 53 incidences of employees being injured. I'm sorry to say that, actually. Seventeen of those incidences required medical attention, and 36 did not. This is a 96% increase in total incidences since 2010, and 50% over last year. So as we, as we continue to grow, we try to maintain safety as a priority, and obviously, we have to pay some more attention. There is an incident summary that's been attached to this report and provided for you. If there's any specific questions, I'll certainly try to answer those or dutifully reflect them to Mr. Seavock. That concludes my report for this evening.
Mr. Kessel, on the safety incidents, would you say that a primary reason that we're up here is just due to inexperience?
To a certain degree, yes, I would agree with that, President Johnson. We have a lot of new people working for us. I would also say that one of the areas that's seen a large increase is in our solid waste Because of the bailing process, it seems that there's been an extraordinary amount of material that's caused us concern. As they go through the bailing process, it requires a lot of compression, which can open up batteries, it can open up items that have chemicals and such where a reaction occurs. And there were 17, excuse me, 18 incidences just in our solid waste department. And so that is a concern as well. I don't think we can chalk it all up to inexperience, because we are getting waste that we weren't getting in years gone by.
Have we changed some processes, or I guess I should just ask what changes have we made in the bailing process and try and enhance the safety features?
We have included warning equipment now for certain gases that they are required to wear, so that if there is a release of an unknown gas, and if it is one that would be potentially life-threatening, the alarm should sound, so that it can evacuate the area. So that is definitely a process that we've, or a piece of safety equipment that we have added. We've also had several discussions on process things, and whether or not, the baler itself is something that is due to be replaced because of the amount of hours that's on that piece of equipment. And we're having the debate about whether or not to replace that piece of equipment with a larger baler, or if we should change our process and not bail, or not bail our solid waste. A loose fill plant, or loose fill landfill, is something that the City of Dickinson has operated in the past. We went to this process because, I believe, because there was complaints from neighboring landowners about materials flying and getting into their land. But it is something that I think we should consider. I can tell you that we are in discussions with the adjacent landowner to acquire property around the landfill, to make that concern less viable, so.
Do we provide protective gear for them to wear when they are doing their job?
Oh, most definitely. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and if they don't wear it, they are subject to the disciplinary process.
I haven't had the opportunity to go out there, but I'm going to. On my agenda.
Well, wear your personal protective equipment.
Mr. Kessel, by definition, no matter how much land we acquire out there, there will always be adjacent landowners, right?
But hopefully, if we acquire the lands, immediately surrounding the landfill, it won't, it won't get materials blown onto them.
Okay, any other questions or comments from Mr. Kessel, really on any items? Okay, well, we have four timetable agenda items. It's 5:00. We'll begin with the first one, and this is on the Homeless Coalition, and Ron Donzel and Joe Warner are scheduled to speak. to speak.
We've, first of all, greetings to the commission, Mr. President. I did meet with Mr. Corton. We put a letter together to be able to inform all of the residents within 300, here it's 300 feet. Mr. Corton gave us all of the addresses, and so, each of those churches mailed those letters out, and those were mailed out in a timely fashion. I think it was within two or three days of the last meeting that we had. I was by the end of that week, anyway. We also put some information out on the radio, to be able to receive information. I haven't received anything but positive, but I'm certain that there may be some here who would like to speak to that. My understanding is this was going to be a hearing time for citizens to be able to voice their opposition or support. And my hope would be that if there are some concerns, that we'd be able to meet those. I believe that we've put in many, many safety features, and that this actually makes the city a safer place to be. But I understand that if it's next door to you, you'd like to know what those safety features are. We also put our, since this time too, and according to that letter, we also put our entire plan online for them to be able to access, or they were welcome to contact either the sending church, or myself, or Mr. Corton, for a copy of all those features. But I know that reading a plan is probably less than desirable. It's not the human nature thing to do, so I didn't have any requests, but it was there. Since this time, we've also established a website where we've published all of those things as well. And the name of that website is homelessindickinson.com. And so, if any of you are interested in staying up to date on what we're doing, we intend to be completely transparent with all of our work, so. But with that, I guess I would stand for any questions, or whatever the process would be. We intend to continue to seek, if you would approve it tonight, to be able to get a temporary use permit to operate in those churches that were mentioned at the last meeting. We've continued to refine our plan in terms of volunteer management, and so, our intent is to be able to, if it helps, just so you can know how we're managing, is each night that we need volunteers for, which would be every night, each church would sponsor one night for volunteers, and the host church would have, so to speak, a monitor who is in charge of the, because they would know the facilities and the program as well. We've also moved forward with the intent that, with the hope that this will receive approval, knowing that our turnaround is very, very short. It was not in any way intended to assume anything, but if we were going to be able to launch in February, we have to get some things scheduled. So, we were able to get some people from Bismarck, who do the training there for their program. They have, we have tentatively scheduled them to come in and do training with our volunteers on Sunday, the 27th. I just received that word today. So, 27th or 29th, the calendar's not in my head, but it's in January. So, I guess I would stand for questions or further direction.
Any questions? Okay, we'll allow you to step down, and we'll declare this public hearing open. And the way I'd suggest we do this, that if there's anyone that is opposed to this action, or has concerns about it, why don't you come to the podium first, just state your name, and we'll hear your concerns. Is there anyone opposed? Yes, just come on up, state your name.
How's everybody doing? My name's Andrew Fish. I live on Sixth Avenue West, about a block down from the church. And I want to start by saying, I think that this is a really well-intentioned plan. However, I think we're getting into territory that we really haven't been to in Dickinson, and I think we want to be careful about what we approve. I'm sure some people here have been to Denver. You go to Denver, they house the homeless, feed them. You walk down the street, you're hassled, you see them everywhere. It's a problem. Last November, come home from, I was at Runnings, come home, and I find a guy defecating in my alley. Confronted him about, you know, what's he doing, what's going on. Homeless guy came up here with a bus pass, had nothing. You know, I understand the want to help people, but if you have nothing, you have nothing to lose also. If it's 10 degrees out, I don't have a coat, I'm pretty likely to break into your house to steal a coat. Is that going to happen? Are we going to have huge issues? I don't know. I'm just, I want to throw that out there, make sure everyone thinks about these things before we approve something like this. Every, I'm not sure if it's an annual survey, or if it's every two years. There's a survey that goes before Congress. It's done by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration on the homeless. And according to that survey, 20% to 25% of homeless individuals suffer from some sort of severe mental illness with recent activities concerning mental illness. Something to think about. Also, 28% are dependent on alcohol. Another 26% abuse some sort of other substance, drugs. So, right there, you have a quarter with some sort of severe mental illness. You have 64%, some sort of substance abuse problem. Is this something you want to invite into your community? Whenever we look at the problem of homelessness, I know, you know, we like to think that we're going to help somebody with a family that's, you know, just up here trying to get a start. And I'm sure there are people like that. But I think you got to look at the possible negative impacts that you might be inviting on the community by opening a center like this. If you guys had any questions or comments.
Have you had the opportunity to read the criteria that they have designed for us?
I have, I just read the sheet. I actually, I didn't get a chance to read their rules that they were, their stuff they made available online, but I will be reading it. Well, I guess a question, what was the gentleman's name that was up here?
Ron.
Ron. Can you tell me a little bit more about the plan, and maybe that's in your web, your web information? I should have read that beforehand, but.
No, I'd be happy to.
Maybe just tell us about, because you're going to pick them up in a location, take them to the church, and then drop them back off. Can you tell me about where this location is, how you're going to inform the homeless, where they can get picked up, you know, how that's going to work and everything?
You bet.
With your pleasure, I don't mind answering that question at all.
I think it'd be, you did this at a previous meeting, but I think it'd be good to go through it again, so.
Certainly, Mr. President. The way the current plan works, and I apologize, I'll talk to you, but I assume they can hear me. But the way the plan is currently set up is, right now, we have homeless that are coming to many of the agencies in town already, including the churches. What is happening is we have nowhere to send them. And so, that's why they're in his alley, because there's nowhere for them to go. And so, the intent is to find a place where they can be kept safe. And so, how the plan will work is, now when they come, or when we would have this plan in place, assuming it's approved, they would come to one of those locations. There's a four-page screening document that would be completed by the professional in that agency, with the information from the homeless individual that's there. Every individual has to provide a picture ID that's valid. That picture ID information would be utilized to do a warrant check, to make sure there's no outstanding warrant for that person's arrest. The person would be notified that there are, of the regulations that we are utilizing, so, because it's very likely that that would take place during the day, but the bus would not pick them up until the evening. And so, they would have the instruction sheet of where to go to meet the bus. It would state that if there's even a sniff of alcohol on them, or there's any altered mental state, they would not be allowed to enter the bus. They're only allowed to carry one bag onto the bus, no pets. If they, any of their bag that they would bring, it will be not, not that we might check it, we will check every bag, and that will be part of that training, is how to inspect the bag, the baggage. They'll be logged into the facility, and they won't be allowed to, if they leave, they won't be allowed to return. And if you have the decision to stay in a nice warm place, or sleep at 6:00 below, guess where you'll be likely to want to stay? At the end of the night, in the morning, at 6:00 a.m., they would then get back onto the bus and be taken back to a location. Currently, the location that we're looking at is Breakforth Bible Church, which is a, it is not residential. It is a commercial location, and it is along the lard, where many of them are walking already, anyway. So, that would be our instructions. The police department is very in tune with our program. They would not only be there for our warrant check, but the chief of police has also asked for that list every night of who we have in there, because we would be checking for the warrants. But he, every night, wants that emailed to him, or provided to them, so that they know exactly who's in the shelter. When it's possible, and for sure, for the first few days, a police cruiser will actually meet the bus. And they would also be visiting the sheltering church when it's available. Another thing, another safety feature that's in place is, we are not sheltering at the same church every night. And so, one, a participating church would shelter for one week. One of the instructions to the homeless is if they show up at the church without going through the screening, they will not only be denied, but they would likely keep them from being accepted in the future as well. We will not allow anybody to come straight to the church. They have to go through the screening and get the ride to the facility. We're not going to let them drive to the facility. They have to, they have to get the ride. The only people who would know where the facility would be, would be those who are within our administrative group, and then also emergency management systems, so that they're aware. There's a lot of safety features in place. I hope I addressed the ones that would be at a concern of somebody. One of the concerns I know is, well, is this going to bring them into my neighborhood? And the truth is, as he already noted, you don't know that they aren't in your neighborhood right now. They were already in your backyard. And rather than allowing them to wander around back there, providing them a safe place where they're monitored by four individuals, and those four individuals are awake all night long. They will be monitored all night long with emergency lanyards, where you just pull it down, and the siren goes off with a cellphone that's already ready to go with 911. I would rather they were supervised next door to me than sleeping in my backyard. And I'm sure that's where they'd want to be, too. So, we think it makes it actually a safer place. Another thing to keep in mind that, to be clear, is this is not a 24-hour program, and it's not a 12-month program. This is just overnight through the winter. We're only asking for a temporary use permit for February and March. We will not go past March. And so, then, we will reevaluate in April, and we would be coming back to you, once we've made any adjustments that we believe need to be made for a longer-term plan.
Is this program being operated in other cities?
It is. My understanding is it started in Bemidji. The program that we're more familiar with operate in Fargo and Bismarck both. Both have operated, Fargo operated last year, and they're operating again this year so far, in those two years of operation without incident, and in Bismarck as well, without incident. So, this has been, and we have more safety features in place than even they do. Quite a bit more.
Well, thank you.
Can I stand up?
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this?
Could I respond to that now, Mr. President?
Just hang on a moment. We'll just see if anybody else wants to speak, and then we'll invite you back up. Is there anybody else? Okay, Mr. Fish, you may come back up.
So, the reason we have the homeless problem right now is because people hear there's jobs up here. So, they come up for a job, and they find out maybe there isn't a job for their skill set. Now, people hear this through the grapevine, so then they hear through the grapevine, hey, there's places to stay up there. So, now, you have the promise of jobs, you have a promise to stay for, I guess, a week. I come up here looking for a job. I don't have the skill set to get a job up here. I'm planning on staying at the homeless shelter. I show up drunk. They don't let me on the bus. Where do I go? Now, you've just invited people up here with the promise, the thoughts, granted, good intentions, but you've created yourself a problem.
We already have that problem. We already have, you know, NBC News, national syndicated radio shows, news sources all over the world touting the demand for jobs in North Dakota. We already have people showing up. And no matter what efforts we put forth to say that it is 95% find a place to live, 5% you'll find a job, which is opposite in other communities. Usually, you find a place to, you find employment, and then find a place to live. We're totally opposite of that. And right now, we have no means of addressing the issue. And there's no way we can stop the fact that North Dakota is a viable place to find employment right now. And we've been lucky here in Dickinson, in that everything has moved rather slowly into our area, but we're feeling the pressure now. And if we don't get in front of it, and have a way to address the issue, it'll get much bigger, and then we won't be able to get in front of it.
I don't disagree with what you said. I disagree that we're getting in front of it the right way. Do I have an answer? No. I just don't think that providing a place to stay for people who have nothing is really the best answer around here. And it sounds cruel, granted, but, you know, I read the statistics out. There's reasons why these people are in the positions they're in, and there's nothing we can do about the local news, or the national news touting the jobs. But, you know, if they come up here, they don't have a job, they don't have a place to stay, more than likely, they're going to leave, where they can go somewhere where they're actually going to, where they cater to them, where they're going to get fed, where they're going to get housing. I mentioned Denver.
Well, and again, and you haven't had a chance to read through the entire plan, so give us a little bit of the benefit of the doubt on that. This is a very temporary, February and March. No meals are provided, so it's not your typical homeless shelter. It is to protect people during the most vulnerable time in North Dakota, and that is during the winter months. And this is our pilot program that we want to run in February and March of this year. It's a temporary permit, so that we can iron out any of the issues that need to be resolved. But without another solution being presented to us, and knowing that the problem exists, I would hope that you could get behind this for the two months that we want to facilitate this, knowing that a comprehensive plan has been put in place. And the other alternative is nothing in place, and no control, and nowhere for people to go. Very temporary, February and March.
Right. And I just want to make a comment that if you guys do approve something like this, and I didn't read the online material.
Right.
But I hope that you work out some sort of plan with local businesses who might be able to hire, you know. I don't think you're going to get rocket scientists coming up here homeless, staying in the shelter. So, someone with their skill set to be able to provide employment, you know, so, okay. You know, I just hope that we work, if we do do this, we work something like that out, so we're not having homeless people up here all the time. We, you know, provide them a means to better themselves as well. And that's all I had. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. President? Mr. Steiner? Mr. DaZell, what is the length of time an individual may stay at the shelter?
Currently, in order to make it a simple plan to operate for these first two months, we've pared it down as much as we can. We are not going to limit somebody. If we have somebody who's a good guest, who's behaving appropriately, and is obeying the rules, for this two-month duration, we haven't put a limit on it. But that certainly is something that we're, we've discussed, and would consider moving on in the future. Part of our issue is, in most cities where this has been done, they have a homeless program in place, and then the churches piggyback off the infrastructure that's there. We don't have an infrastructure in place, really, to speak of at all. And so, we've had to, we've had to develop that as we go along. And if I may speak to just a couple of the issues, one about the employment. Because we're paring it down, and to be honest, we're churches that are doing this. And certainly, we hope there'll be a lot of community members that would join, whether or not they attend a church. We think that there are many people, what's one of the things about the North Dakota way, I mean, we can't. way, I mean, we care about our fellow man, and, and I believe there will be. But, we also do want to better their situation. And so, there is a piece in that four-page document, which is available online. It's still being ironed out, but there is a piece in there where, as they're being interviewed, they will be asked, what further assistance do you need so that we can steer them towards the, where they need to go? And employment is one of those issues, along with some other things, so we can better their situation. And, and as much as we say, well, I would bet there's no rocket scientist coming in, I, I will tell you, our clientele of homeless is unique to any clientele of homeless. And I'll just speak to two, just because their time is of the essence. But, one individual, and Joe could share the story better, but one individual who was on the verge of homelessness in this area, believe it or not, was an engineer, and just didn't know how to get plugged into the system, and with just a little bit of help, is now off the street, paying rent, and is just the kind of person we'd want to have in, in Dickinson, North Dakota. That's not everybody. That's not everybody, but they're out there. And then another individual that I received telephone calls about, because I will tell you, I am not the expert on homelessness. I am just a guy who knows how to prod and make things go forward, and, but I'm surrounded by people who, who are, in particular, Shanna Urban has been a great benefit to us, and she could speak to this even better than I could, but, but because my, my face was on the paper after the last meeting, I, I've gotten some of the phone calls. And I continue to get a phone call, phone calls from different individuals who are working with the same guy. I'm confident it was the same guy, same exact situation. He'd been living in Dickinson, and he had been working. He'd been working, going through the day labor workforce, and he'd been sleeping in his car until the point where he had such severe frostbite that he had to admit himself into our hospital. All of a sudden, our system takes on more pressure. I, I am also in the hospital patient advisory council, and I know that the emergency room is, got more pressure than it needs. We just created, and he had a place to sleep. That's one more person that, that wouldn't have had to go to the hospital. As well as, now with severe frostbite, a man who was working can't. So, we've just, that problem had gotten created, and so, I understand the concern. I think our clientele is different. I don't doubt that some of those are out there. I hope that our safety features, I believe our safety features are met to, or will meet the, the concern of those things, and those who are, if they have those issues, they're already on the street anyway, and they, they just won't be admitted into our program.
So, the person who may stay multiple nights, he has to sign up every day?
Yes.
Again?
Now, he won't-
And he's not guaranteed a spot every day? But what happens when you have more people than you have room for, and he's one of them?
Two good questions. One, to clarify how, how we currently envision it, and we're still working out the details, but how we currently envision it is, is at 6:00 AM, when we go to get on the bus, if person X says, you know, I'm going to day labor, and I'm just making up that part of it, but I'm, I'm, I've got a plan for today, but I don't have a plan for tonight. And so, they've already passed through our screening, and they've been a good guest, then they would be readmitted at that point. So, they would know at that point where they would be. They would, the warrant check, they wouldn't have to go through the entire screening again because a lot of those questions are demographic, but they, but that warrant check would be done repeated times. Does that, does that answer? Now, to the other side of that, what if there's more people than we have room for? That's why we went to the bus picking somebody up at a, at a location. We didn't want to, and why they're being checked in before. So, when, if they come to our church and I work the paperwork, a phone call will be made. We already have somebody in this position who will receive a telephone call. She's got a cell, she'll have a cellphone, and she'll have the list to 15. So, I go through the paperwork, I do the warrant check with the police department, I make the telephone call. Do you have room for this person tonight? Yes or no? And only at that time, only once they've passed everything. And if they don't, I simply don't tell them where to go meet the bus. If we do, well, then, then we go on with the process. And, again, I agree with him. It sounds harsh, you know? I wish we could, I wish I could solve all the problems that were there, and I could save everybody. But we, we intentionally kept this program as manageable as we could so that, to, to iron out all the questions that could possibly be there, so that we could be, we can come before you in April and say, there was no incidents, and here's where we plan to improve going forward. Does that answer the questions?
And this, and this is just a temporary use permit, and I really want to commend the churches and the homeless coalition for taking this on, because we had no other place to provide services for these people.
And that is a great point, Commissioner DuCard. It is a temporary use permit only for February and March. Our committee will be meeting, we've met diligently every week, and we will continue to meet as the program goes on to be evaluating and ensuring that it, that it operates. In fact, we are required, according to the requirements that Mr. Corton provided to us, we're required to report to the city at the end of every week, the, the number of people that we've served. He's, he's got certain demographics that we have to give out. One of the things that I intend to do is even just photocopy our logbook. There'll be a logbook where, not, not just a logbook, but there'll also be a journal where the people who are, who are serving will just take down notes of what took place throughout the night. And it, it'll probably be a lot of boring stuff, like, it's 12 o'clock and everybody's still sleeping. It's 12:30, and so-and-so got up to use the restroom for the third time. I mean, it'll probably, I hope it's full of boring stuff, but you'll, but we will be completely transparent. You'll be able to see all of that information. And to speak to the issue of, I appreciate your, your, your kind words as far as moving forward. One of the things that, being on the homeless coalition as well, because I just have more time to do these things, but Joe, and I, as we've gotten to work, one of the things that I've known, that we've come to know is that one of the issues the homeless coalition has come against is there's nobody, there's no good place for the data to be collected about what's really happening in Dickinson. Nobody really knows. Our best guess is, before the cold snap that really took place a few weeks ago, is we were at 30 to 50 homeless, but we don't know. We simply don't know. And we don't know how much pressure has already been absorbed into our homes, and I would imagine, you don't have to think very far to think of somebody who has their cousin living on their couch, or, or, or staying in their place, that we wouldn't think of as homeless, but let's be honest, if there was a place that they could afford rent, your cousin wouldn't be sleeping on your couch. And there's just a lot of that, a lot of that kind of stuff going on. So, we are more full to capacity, fuller to capacity, my, my degree's in math, than, than we would like to believe, and so, we just don't really know. But that's where we'll be able to gain some of that data, and I think really be a benefit to the homeless coalition going forward.
Are your sermons this long?
Long. I invite you to come in here.
Well, okay, well, you've provided lots of information, Pastor Ron. Just again, is there anyone else that's opposed? You know? Okay. If, if there's someone that is for, and you're dying to speak, we'll certainly hear you, but I don't know that you can improve upon what Pastor Ron has done. But, if you'd like to take a shot at it, you're welcome to try. Okay. Well, then, I'm going to declare the, the hearing closed. There is a, a resolution that would grant the temporary use permit, and it has several conditions attached to it. And I know I'm in favor of doing this, but I also share some of the concerns that Mr. Fish brought forth, and that, you know, generally speaking, the homeless population carries a number of risks with them, and he pointed them out. So, we just caution you and, and hope that you're going into this with eyes wide open. As, as supportive as the police department's going to be, again, at any one time, we likely only have five or so officers on duty, and, you know, they cannot be every place at one time. So, we're going to wish you well on this, but, you know, really caution you to be careful while you do this. So, with that, I'd invite any other, any comments by commissioners, other comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
You know, I think we probably have many in our community that share the concerns that Mr. Fish has raised. I think they're legitimate concerns. I'm also, though, very impressed with what the coalition has done. I think it's done a good job preparing for some of this risk that, that it is taking and that we as a community are taking. It seems really well thought out to me. I, I think what, what is most important to me is that this is a good dry run, if you will, a good limited attempt at trying to solve the homeless problem. If we grow to be the community, a community the size that many are saying we're going to, this problem could very likely be proportionately higher or even more. Who knows? So, this will be good background for us. It'll be a good learning curve. In the end, we can't, I don't think we can eliminate the risk. We have to accept that as a community. We can't eliminate all the risk. But I'm in favor of this too. I think we should do it.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments?
Well, I would just reiterate that having no plan is not a viable option either, and this has been the best plan to date to address a growing problem in our community. We do have a shelter for women and families. We don't have one for men. And you, if they were presenting this as an option for women and children, it would be a slam dunk. But, men also get into the same homeless situation, whether it be domestic violence, whether it be losing employment. It's not just people showing up into our community unannounced and, and looking for an opportunity. It can happen to people that live here, that had their rent increased, that found that last month they could afford to live in the apartment that they've lived in for the last 10 years. But when their renewal came up, and the bills got stretched tighter than their budget, and they've left that apartment and have lived in our community for a number of years, but have been forced out of their current home, that is an issue. It's not all strangers that are coming to our community that are finding themselves in this situation. It is a product of our environment. And again, having no solution is not a viable option. And doing a two-month test run where we can vet this out, and, and if you look at the comprehensive plan online, I think that you'll find that a lot of thought went into this. And in two months' time, we'll know the fruits of the labor, and we'll know what direction we need to go moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Altman. Any other comments?
I would just say, I don't know which president it was, probably Franklin Roosevelt, that said the greatest fear is fear itself. We have to try it. I feel we have to try it. If it doesn't work, that's why we're giving you a temporary, or talking about a temporary use permit here.
Thank you, Commissioner DuCard. It was Franklin Roosevelt. Mr. Coling, do you have a resolution number?
Mr. President, this would be Resolution 05-2013.
05, okay. Other comments? Will there be a motion regarding the resolution then?
Motion to approve Resolution 05-2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other comments? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. DuCard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go on to the next item then, which is our 515 timetable agenda item. This is a public hearing regarding Northern Place Apartments Affordable Housing Pilot Request. We'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment regarding this item may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody that opposes this request? Come on up, we'll hear you. Is there anybody for it?
My name's Alex Burke Alter of Housing Solutions. This is a project I'm working on, so I am for it. I just wanted to make myself available to the council if you had any questions.
So, okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this issue? Then, we'll declare the public hearing closed. We're going to allow you to comment if, if need be. Mr. Kessel has written a memo to us regarding the, the pilot request. Mr. Kessel, would you like to say anything about your, your memo?
Certainly, President Johnson. The memo covers both of the next, this hearing and the next one regarding Heritage Hills. Essentially, those projects are very, very similar in nature, both affordable housing. I think the differences are much fewer than the similarities. Basically, the differences are, one's a senior housing project, the other is, is not, and their mix then is more reflective of the clientele in which they'd like to serve. So, other, other than those two things, they're very similar in, in size. They're both looking at around 42 units to construct. They're both using the federal tax credit system to fund a great deal of their property. So, my memo, as it's laid out for you today, comments on each of these, and also provides a, a cost, so to speak, or a revenue scenario that, that we would give up. And I want to make sure that there's a couple things that the commission is, is well aware of. First of all, although the city commission does have the authority to abate taxes or provide a pilot for all taxes, including all political subdivisions, that levy property taxes in the city of Dickinson, school district, city of Dickinson, park district, and the county, it is not the intention of the requesters to, to avoid paying taxes on any entity other than the city itself. So, the request confines itself to the revenue stream that the city would forego, not the county, not the school districts, and not the park boards. So, they, they would pay those taxes in full to those tax, those political entities. They would also pay the city the land, any property taxes associated with the land itself. It's simply the structure that would get an exemption, and it would be related to just the city property tax. So, having said all of that, there is a history. If you go back to 2010, city did provide a 17-year pilot, or at least approved a pilot. It was never invoked because the project did not get the federal tax credit and was not built. But there was a 17-year pilot that was approved by the city commission. In 2011, a very similar project, a, the city commission approved a 20-year pilot for that project. And in 2012, not only was a pilot approved for 20 years, but also a request, very similar to what was been requested by Mr. Madler this evening, for a fee reduction was also granted. None of these projects were actually received federal tax credits, so none of those projects were funded, therefore built, so, so none of those pilot projects actually came to fruition. It is, it is my recommendation tonight that we, that the city commission do approve a pilot for 20 years, for the initial value in 2015 of $14,700, escalate it at two years, that it only apply to the city mill value, mill value, or the city property tax. The concern that I have is with the escalation clause, because we cannot predict what's going to happen in the future, is with that two-year escalation, it could exceed the amount of revenue that the city would, would bring in.
Excuse me, you said two-year escalation.
I'm sorry.
Two percent. Two percent per year.
Two percent per year. Sorry about that. So, it would escalate from 14,700 to 21,400, but I think it should be capped to just impede city property taxes and not affect any of the other political subdivisions. I'm also not in favor of the fee waiver request. I would, I would, my recommendation would be to deny that request. The fee, the fees that are requested to be waived are for connection fees, for tipping fees at our landfill, and also a, sorry, there's one other fee that was requested- at our landfill, and also a, sorry, there's one other fee that was requested, building permit, thank you. All of those are services that we provide. All of those will be costs that will incur as a community. They're hard costs for us, and I just don't think that we should waive those. I also believe the pilot request would be a direct buy-down of the rents in these buildings. So the rents would be directly affected and lowered because of the pilot. I'm not sure the same can be said about the fee waivers. So that summarizes the memo. If there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer those, but those are my recommendations this evening.
Mr. President? Mr. Steiner? Mr. Kessel, I don't know if there's been an update, but you recommended 20-years pilot program, and I see here an actual request for 15?
What I've done, that's a good question, Commissioner Steiner, I've looked at these projects as essentially one, because they are so similar in nature, I understand that the request from Northern Place is different than the request that was made by Beyond Shelter. I have looked at, or considered Beyond Shelters because that is, they asked for the most. If you want to deviate and allow a 15-year pilot for Northern Place, certainly I'm okay with that. But that's how I looked at it, is a same request for two buildings, even though they were different in their initial request.
You wanted to be consistent?
Correct.
From one project to the other?
Correct.
Does that affect your plan at all?
No, either would be fine. Once the project is awarded credits by the Housing Finance Agency, construction starts and it's off into its, serving its purpose. Things are pretty much set with the investor, the commercial lender, all those places for 15 years. The federal rules basically say nothing can change for 15 years, and that's why I went with the 15-year number. At the end of 15 years, a permanent loan has a balloon due, there's a refinance, and that's why I went with 15. I understand Dan's request for 20 because 16 years probably would have been more appropriate because it always takes a little time to get that stuff done. But that's where the 15-year came from. 20 wouldn't be a problem, you know, whatever works easiest for you guys.
Thank you. Mr. President? Mr. Jackson? I realize it's a, I think that it's a remote possibility, but there is some chance both projects could be approved.
Yeah, it's, Commissioner Jackson, it is possible. I think you're accurate in saying that it'd be very remote for a community like Dickinson to get two projects. The amount of projects that I'm sure will be brought forth to the North Dakota Housing will far exceed us, allowing us to get two, I think.
Other comments or questions? Well, Mr. Kessel laid out a number of conditions here, and you could simply, if you're in favor of what he said, the motion can simply be to accept his recommendation, and they will get it correct in the minutes. If you wish to deviate from that, you're on your own. Is there a motion out there regarding this item?
I'd make a motion to accept his recommendation, and also that the fee waivers be denied.
And also what?
The fee waivers be denied.
Okay, well, that's part of his recommendation, but...
That was a further one he had on here.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. The motion was to accept all of his recommendations here. So we got them all.
I said that part.
Yes, you did. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. Ms. Dukert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to the second, or the third timetable item, and that's a public hearing on Heritage Hills Affordable Senior Housing. And we'll declare the public hearing open. And is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of this? There's no one that wishes to speak in opposition, then is there anyone that'd like to speak for it? Just come to the podium, state your name.
Mr. President, City Commissioners, City Staff, my name is Dan Madler. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Beyond Shelter Incorporated. Appreciate the support and the comments and Sean's recommendation, and for the project itself. Last meeting, I talked briefly about the project, its benefits, the structure, the type of project. And one of the things that I kind of zeroed in on was, from my understanding as far as how the statute works, and the pilot and how I applied for the statute, I just need to clarify and make sure that my understanding is correct, because I think it devates a little bit from what Sean has said, in the form of the other political subdivisions, i.e. the county, the park district, the school district, under the North Dakota Century Code that we have applied for. It's the Economic Development Century Code. And I believe that the city has the authority to approve the pilot request in that format, and then also have the opportunity for the city and the school and the county to comment on. But once the payment is approved, or once the pilot is approved, I believe it is a payment lieu of taxes across the board. And so payment would then be made to the city, and then the city would then basically prorate the county and so on and so forth, and pay the school district and the county. So I'm thinking that's how, or that's my understanding of the Century Code. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not really sure, but just want to make sure that, that's my understanding and just full disclosure, that the pilot request and the statutory code that we did, my understanding is that. And thus, that's why I went ahead and did the advertising, because it also had some advertising for an affidavit, just to make sure I had my i's dotted and my t's crossed. Because in these situations and these times, I did not want to take anything for granted, but I just also want to full disclose, this is my understanding.
Mr. President, I can comment on that. I do appreciate Mr. Madler's action in advertising for this, because that is required under the Century Code statute. We'll need to work with the proprietors for Northern Place to make sure that that statutory requirement is fulfilled as well. The way the statutory section works, the standard way in which tax revenues are dispersed is a prorata formula. But the statute does allow for municipalities to enter into agreements with the other taxing entities, to deviate from that, and allows the city the ability to disperse that tax revenue in a different manner, other than prorata, if the city so chooses.
So it doesn't really matter to Beyond Shelter here and then. They're going to pay the same amount. If the city chooses to keep less of it and pass more of it on to the county and the school district, that's our decision.
That's correct.
I was misunderstanding. I was thinking, we're just going to pay the city, and I was trying to think, how am I going to underwrite the city tax and the pilot, and then also have to pay full taxes on the improvements to the county? And it was just, the formula was, would be hard to underwrite. And so that's a good clarification. I appreciate that. Mr. Coling?
If I could mention, Mayor, President Johnson, I did invite the other taxing entities a representative from each, and let them know that this public hearing was taking place this evening, in case they wanted to be represented and speak.
You know, I don't know that we have to do anything other than a prorata distribution because the school district and the county, the park district, they all suffer the impacts of the lack of affordable housing, just like the city does. And so, yes, they're going to give up some tax revenue here, but we're going to gain some additional affordable housing, which some of their employees may end up being able to take advantage of, too. So I'm not sure that in these cases we have to do anything for. And the city has been very careful on granting pilots. I think we pretty much have just granted pilots to affordable housing projects, and I think we've granted pilots to the nursing homes. So I, that's kind of a side issue that doesn't impact, but I mean, that's my feeling. And we can talk more about that at future meetings and...
A cursory review, President Johnson, would verify your memory, that it's been to affordable housing projects, and I believe to a single nursing home, at least in the recent past.
Right.
The last thing that I have today to say is, in my follow-up letter and support documentation, I detailed out a lot of information. It was included in your packet. I could answer or stand for any questions that you have, but I think, I believe all of you are familiar with it, and I appreciate your time, your consideration, and your support. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Madler?
Well, just one comment, so the public can separate the two. Yours is for 55 and older.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessel, anything else you wanted to add?
I was just going to thank you, President Johnson, to ask Mr. Madler, this is a Phase One of a Phase Two scenario, so there is potentially the second phase of 39 units, I believe, of senior housing. Again, I believe you'd request tax credits for that project as well.
Mr. Kessel, Mr. President, and City Commissioners, that is correct. Essentially, it's an annual allocation. It's very competitive. If we were successful in getting a funding allocation this year, we would start construction in the fall and complete in the fall of 2014. But at the same time, in January of 2014, we would be applying for the Phase Two project. And at that time, we would be before the City Commission here, asking and requesting for a letter of support, and also the same request would be regarding the pilot request. So that basically, the project, even though it would be built in a two-phase project in whole, it would look as one complete project, operating under the same assumptions and underwriting.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? We can, again, if you're in favor of this, and if you agree with Mr. Kessel's recommendations, you can simply move the motion that we accept his recommendations regarding this project. Of course, you're free to do something else, too. Mr. President? Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve the pilot project with the recommendations of Mr. Kessel.
Second.
We have the motion second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Dukert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have a 540 timetable agenda item, the last one. This is a public hearing regarding the current homebuyers exemption. City staff is making a recommendation that we do away with the homebuyers property tax exemption, new homebuyers. But at this time, we're going to declare the public hearing open. Anybody that wishes to comment may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody who wishes to comment? Nobody wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'd invite comments from City Commissioners. Just a question, Mr. President. What did we do to, did we do anything specific to make Realtors and Home Builders aware of the public hearing? Mr. Kessel, could you answer that question?
Certainly, President Johnson. We did. Mr. Hirschfeld did meet with them. I know that Commissioner Dukert also had discussions at a regular meeting of the Realtors. She can comment on that herself. But yes, Mr. Hirsch, I also had some conversations with builders in the community as well, just anecdotally.
Thank you. Okay, well, what we'll do is we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting for action. I'm assuming it's probably going to be Resolution Six, or you'll assign it a number when we get there, but there is a sample resolution in your packet, and I'm assuming that's the one that we would have on here for action at our next meeting. Okay, with that, we're going to move on, and we get down to public safety, and we'll hear the fire department report. So Chief Seavock?
President Johnson, Commissioners, the activities of the Dickinson Fire Department for the month of December 2012 are as follows. December incidents, we saw a decrease compared to the last several months of incidents that were 30-plus. We ended the year in December with 26 incidents. That compares to 29 in December of 2011, and 25 in December of 2010. 399 total incidents for the year, compared to 286 in 2011, and 240 in 2010, gives us a 40% increase of total incidents over 2011, a 66% increase over 2010. Fire prevention and public education activities for the month, we had 68 routine inspections, 37 follow-ups, 23 construction, five childcare, 20 miscellaneous, which included fire suppression systems tests, fire drills, and complaint investigations. December activities for the department, our general December meeting, our general meeting was the election of officers, and all of our officers stayed the same this year. There were no changes, with the exception of a couple members on the retirement board. Special operations team trained with our new air packs that we have received and that are in service now, and a rapid intervention team pack, which is a special set of equipment, an air pack, a mask, and other tools to help find, help locate, and remove trapped firefighters, as well as possibly trapped civilians. Regular training, again, we concentrated on the new air packs. Regional Fire School in Beach, North Dakota was on auto extrication, and we sent several members to that. Six of our members went as students, two of our members went as possible future instructors. And that concludes the activities for the month of December. The annual report we'll be following, hopefully, in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any comments or questions for Chief Seavock?
Chief Seavock, I believe last week there were two mobile home fires. Can you tell us about those, how they started, and so on?
The first one, our cause is being listed as undetermined. We know the room of origin, and we have a couple of very good ideas as to what actually caused that fire, but it's one of those situations where we can't conclusively prove one thing over the other thing, so we're listing it as an undetermined cause of the fire. That, of course, resulted in two civilians being taken to the hospital with injuries. That fire, again, there was a fatality averted there by the quick actions of a police officer and of citizens on the scene, and we'll be talking to you more about that later at another commission meeting. Another fire involving a mobile home happened about a week later, and that fire, we can say, was caused by a child playing with a lighter in the living room. The result of that fire put seven citizens, not seven, five citizens in the hospital with injuries related to the fire.
Were they all family members?
No, no, they were not.
Was there any concern about non-family, the amount of non-family members in a mobile home?
For the fire department, that is not a concern that we recognize at that point in time. That may be a concern that maybe falls under other aspects of the city umbrella, but for us, at that time, at that scene, it's not something that we readily recognize as something that we need to address, or even quite honestly, something that the city needs to address at that point in time.
But we do have a code that, what, for unrelated relatives in residence?
Yeah. There was the tenant and two children, and I'm not sure of the status of the rest of the occupants, as whether they were overnight guests, whether they were there for a week, or whether they were, in fact, sharing the residence as a place to live. or whether they were, in fact, sharing the residence as a place to live.
More likely with the two children, they were not in violation of the code then.
No, no, not in that respect.
Thank you.
And the particulars of the others in the home is not something that we've gathered information on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from the police department.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I have before you the December 2012 monthly police report. We definitely seen winter driving conditions for the month of December. We had a total of 138 total traffic crashes. Four of those were injury-related, and 23 of them were hit-and-run-related accidents. There were a total of 456 traffic stops conducted, 209 warnings issued, and 386 citations issued. We were down for our monthly calls for service compared to last year. We had a total of 1,772 calls for the month of December compared to last year for the same timeframe, in which we seen 1,901 calls. We ended the year with just under 25,000 calls for service, 24,853, compared to last year, in which we ended with 22,872 calls.
Chief Dossinger, last December, was that an unusually high number, or this December, did we have a more normal number? Why would we be down?
We had more of a normal number, I like to call it, normal number. I guess say it's our new norm, hopefully. Last year, we're definitely busy in the month of December. Even though our winter driving conditions were worse off for this year, the numbers were still down, which is good.
You know, along the same line, if I could, I noticed that the fire report, same thing in December. Is it a trend, do you think? Do you think you're going to see January and February down?
You know, just visiting with municipal court, the activity for the month of January is definitely increasing, that they've seen.
Increasing?
Increasing. We've got a definite...we're busy so far this month, and I guess we'll have to see the next couple of months as far as where the trend really goes.
Okay.
Training-wise, we did have two members from the Red River Valley SWAT team come and train with our members of our tactical team for two days. They covered topics such as active shooter, slow searches, dynamic searches, and tactical firearms training. This month, we are getting into several of the schools. We are doing some active training, as far as active shooter training in the schools. Our goal is to get into four schools in the next four, six months here, and we also invited our local agencies to participate in that training with us.
So for us, people that aren't experienced in law enforcement, when you...just could you quickly explain what's the difference between a slow search and a dynamic search?
Correct. A dynamic search is, you're not...basically, you're going in there, you're not concerned about making noise, you'll be busting doors down, you're going to the source. A slow, a methodical search, you're trying to be quiet, be methodical about your search, make sure...you don't want the suspect to know you're there.
Okay.
That's kind of the two separations of those.
Dynamic search, you don't care.
That's correct.
Okay, got it.
Are there any questions?
I did notice one of the statistics, it's the hit-and-run of 23 incidents last month. I am one of those statistics. It cost me $700, but I'm sure whoever did it will send me a check in the mail, but it's got to be frustrating for you guys to have that many hit-and-run accidents.
Yeah, and those are difficult to solve, unless we have some concrete evidence left behind. A lot of those are parking lot-related. It might get your mirror taken off, door dings, paint damage. Those are tough to solve, unless somebody actually witnesses it.
Chief Dossinger, I have a question. I know you can't wave a magic wand, but on Second Street and Second Avenue West, the corners are really blind, and basically, I think, because the cars are parked rather than parallel, they're parked like this, when you're coming out, you can't see if a car's coming until you're almost into the middle of the lane. I don't know what you can do about that, but I know you had another incident this afternoon, so it's just...and it seems like whenever I come out on that street, too, you have to pull almost all the way out into the middle to see if there's cars coming.
We certainly could take a look at that, and maybe we need to extend the no-parking area back from the corners, more than what it is right now.
I knew you'd have a wand.
I wish I did.
You could pull around the block.
If you had a magic wand, you wouldn't be chief of police in Dickinson, right? Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you for being here. Okay, we'll go to Tab Six, Planning. Mr. Cretan, you've been rather quiet tonight, so here's your chance.
Well, I thought that since my reclassification was on, that I wouldn't talk too much tonight in order to remove me from the potential list of candidates for that, so thank you very much. This is a...
That was wise, by the way.
Wise beyond my ears, I guess. Evangelical Bible Church, this is the second reading of the annexation, roughly two acres to the north of their current church location. This is for the expansion of their church. This is consistent with the Century Code that requires it to be published and noticed, and there are no changes from the first reading. City staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Cretan. At this time, we'd invite anybody from the public to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. If you wish to comment, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public that wishes to comment? Would there be a motion regarding second reading and final passage of ordinance 1496?
I'll move for the second reading.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Harry Nunnam will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Are there any reports by city commissioners? Not...is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission. I'd like to comment on Sean Kessel's...
Excuse me, can you state your name?
Kevin Marks.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'd like to comment on Mr. Kessel's work earlier tonight to separate planning from engineering. That's a very wise move, very wise move, and I commend you for that. And it's a wise move, especially in today's real estate markets out here, because planning the human environment can contradict engineering. Engineering tends to be about putting in roads and pipes, and it tends to forget about how to build real communities and neighborhoods that we love and cherish, and that hold value during energy shocks. And in choosing a community development director, which is a good move here, that person should be able...should be qualified and understand and be educated in smart growth principles. One of my concerns is, I have reviewed the 2035 plan, and it seems to be void of major changes in real estate planning. There is no smart growth principles put into that, the six livability principles from HUD, which is now a major recommendation. I'm not sure why that is. I have spoken with Scott Pickett from Catalyst, Leon Jackson, about that, and we're making a submission to him. But these are unusual times, and there has been significant changes in real estate. We always talk about technology. The technology that has been brought forward in real estate recently is significant. The city is also having a difficult time with processing builder applications. One way to do it would be moving under a Form-based code transected format that would simplify it quite easily. No fix is perfect, we all recognize that. But I do commend you on your move for that, and I hope we can separate planning, and I'm trying to read the 2035 plan and understand it. I still don't see a form by which we can openly talk about smart growth. I don't understand that, and I'd like to get to know a lot more. Next subject, workforce housing, temporary workforce housing. I've been trying to study and understand that. We're in a very expansive mode in the city here, and what it causes is, we're addressing the bigger companies and the old companies on workforce housing. We're definitely doing that, and doing a good job of that. But the people getting left behind are the small business owners in town here. They're being left behind. There's no place for...there's no answers many times for what to do with the workforce housing. So under temporary workforce housing, I asked the question, what is approved? RVs are definitely out, mobile homes are out, Katrina cottages have not been considered, FEMA trailers seem to be out, and the only thing that is approved is skid housing. So I asked the question, if we were to have a disaster in town here, Katrina, storm, whatever, what is our temporary workforce housing answer? And it appears to be skid housing. So the question that I'll be trying to study is, are we allowed to put skid housing in various places throughout the city? You know, how do we deal with that? Anyway, I'll end here, but smart growth. There's been a tremendous amount of work on this. It's a big subject, but the established way we build our cities is moving...we've been doing it for 70 years, not more than 70, but just 70 years. In consideration of a community development director, please take into consideration a director who understands why we have smart growth, what it's about, and whether they can bring that to the city of Dickinson, so we can build a beautiful city that has lasting value and that we love. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the commission? Not...Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second.